A lot of y'all know me a long time. I showed up by myself.
Be quiet, he's speaking, I want to hear what he has to say.
I showed up by myself because I don't hide from my folks. This is our community. So when I saw this was happening, even though I got married like yesterday, I told my new wife, I have to be there. And we rolling solo. It's been a hard year in the Capitol, and I know you all feel that. I had no problem with any of these bills. The problem was raised a few days before. In the caucus, there's been fractures between community and the caucus. And some of us have tried to bridge those. Chris has done a fantastic job, by the way. I haven't seen somebody in Sacramento that frequently, that often, with multiple organizations, but still pushing the consistent message. He'll be there with ARC, but still pushing the message. And every time I see Chris or anybody else, I make space and I make time. For me, what happened at the end of the session, the first thing I want to say in an article that's going to come out tomorrow, like I said, I got married. I didn't stop this racist motherfucker on the floor. That's not how you move motions. And I know we got some Sacramento people who know you don't walk up to the front. I wasn't even talking to him. He had already been ruled by the Speaker Pro Tem as dilatory. He wasn't allowed to speak on anything else because he was trying to stop the last hundred bills from going through. If he could delay till midnight, a hundred bills would have died. One of those bills penalizes the Inglewood Oil Field and creates a community fund that can only be spent within two miles of the field that's right here. That's a twenty million dollar fund, that was still on the table. He was trying to stop everything in the house, and there's plenty of videos of that. And we'll make sure they get out there, but I've been busy, I was getting married, so I wasn't going to defend myself. If you want to come, you can come, I'm going to take it. I told Marcus, this was when he was up there, I signed up for this. I signed up for this, there was a day when I used to be banging on the doors too. I remember yelling at Mary Garcia in 2020 in fame. I remember being out here with all of you many, many times over on many, many issues. But I signed up to be inside out. But I never forgot, when the stuff happened, I started trying to whip my colleagues. I started trying to whip my colleagues. Now, I would never second Bill O'Sealy on anything, by the way. Never ever, and if you want to second Bill O'Sealy on something, I encourage you to look up this man's background. For us, you had to have the majority of the caucus in the play. Otherwise, it was only going to fracture us more. So I told Senator Bradford and I told community, the second fraction started, that we have to whip seven. There's twelve members of the caucus, you got to whip seven. We could not get to seven. So the choices for me were to roll all of my caucus mates who I have to build with next year, and stand with the most racist person in the Assembly who's trying to use this to wedge our community. Look them up. Or, or encourage, or encourage solidarity. Encourage solidarity amongst my colleagues, encouraging growth and learning from my colleagues, and encourage solidarity with community. Because we fractured from the start this year. And we can't come back next year fractured, not the members of the caucus, and not the caucus as an entity in the community. We've got to tighten it up. So what we're going to do is we're going to let Isaac finish, then we're going to have the individuals who are up there, the more so witness, who actually happened to, to maybe raise some questions. Let Isaac, then we're going to open up for community. But again, shouting out and going back and forth, that's not going to work, because we are not going to be able to hear anything. So we're going to let Isaac finish his phase, then we're going to get to organizers who are up there. First of all, everybody who came up, whether we get along or not, whether you've been shooting the last few days or not, we are all needed in this work. And I'm glad you were there, and we need more people there next year. We need more people during more of the process, because the best thing that happened, the best thing that happened, even if it's at the caucus's expense, is that California seized black power. California has seen black power for the first time in a long time in Sacramento. Sacramento doesn't respect black folks the way the city of Los Angeles has had to. So thank you to the folks who did that trip. Thank you to the folks who made it your first time and you came up. We're going to keep doing this work, we have to keep doing this work. The last thing that I will say is the second there was a problem, I called my own emergency Zoom and said the same message, we have to whip the caucus. We have to get seven members. We have to get seven members. I suggested Steve should apologize to folks. Whatever it takes to get seven, we have to get seven. So whoever's got a personal thing, I said, look, put it aside, we have to get seven. I tried to whip people with just, this ain't our problem, put it on the governor's desk anyway, I tried whatever I could. I could not get to seven, we could not get to seven. And I was, and I, hey, you, also. No, I got you. So. I'm going to close it up right now by telling y'all a couple key things. I will never not show up. I will never not show up here. And the only reason, by the way, I'm in any of the pictures is because I went to the gate. I didn't hide from folks, I got off the elevator and I went to the gate because I'm never going to leave Ms. Jan or anybody else building on the other side of the gate without at least acknowledging you're here and trying to tell you what I think we can do. We've got a lot of work to do, we've waited a long time for this, we've made major progress, we have a lot more we've got to do, and we have to just keep pushing. But next year, at the start of the legislative cycle, we have to come in together. It's got to be together. All right, we have, we have at least an hour left, so we're going to get to everybody's questions, so don't everybody have to get too anxious, we're going to go back to questions. We're going to start with our brother Marcus and CJ. And again, we're going to let all the organizers up here, whether you want to respond to what Isaac just said and share what you saw up there, brother Marcus and CJ.
Let them speak, please.
What's going on, y'all? So. So I want to ask everybody a question real quick, so is reparations the most important legislation for our people in the history of this country? Okay, so I want everybody to realize something. Everybody heard Assembly Member Brian just say that they asked Senator Bradford to apologize, right? So essentially, y'all just heard. So he asked him to apologize. So what, what is being admitted right here, which is what we've known for over a year, because we've been talking to these folks, that they let their personal beef and grudges with Senator Bradford stop the most important legislation in the history of our country? So, I want to tell y'all something else, I want to tell y'all something else. Because it's a whole lot that happened that day, it's a whole lot that's happened across this past year. What y'all saw in that video was actually the second time that O'Sealy got up. So, I'm going to, I'm going to lay out the whole scenario for y'all. So what Assembly Member Brian just said is that he was trying to whip the caucus to bring the votes. So, he couldn't get the caucus to bring the bill up. So if O'Sealy went up, that was the second time. The first time he went up, he made a motion for AB 1331 to be heard. He did not get a second. So what happened was, Assembly Member Brian, if you couldn't bypass the caucus, if they wouldn't bring it, that was your chance to second the motion. It doesn't matter, it doesn't matter who does our shit for us. It just matters, nah, I didn't say that. It just matters that the legislation goes through. I don't care if some Republicans trying to clap, chase off the moment, if reparations goes through. So that's what happened. The second, the second time, the second time when y'all see him up there, what actually happened was, is that the Assembly, by way of the CLBC, violated Assembly rules and put both Bradford's bills to the inactive status. And so what O'Sealy was actually trying to do, O'Sealy actually came out, showed us the Assembly rulebook where they violated protocol. Where they violated protocol. So what O'Sealy was trying to do right there was to appeal the motion to bring the bills back off the inactive file. And that's what you saw in that video right there. So all, all this shit we hearing from the CLBC, we know that actually went down. We've been meeting with every single one of the CLBC members for the past year. And since Bradford gutted and amended his bill last August, the first thing that came out of all their mouths is Bradford didn't do this the right way. That's why, if you go on the California Legislative Website right now and bring up SB 1403, you'll see the bill was introduced, because the video cut off before it showed it. SB 1403 was introduced in February. The California Legislative Black Caucus didn't sign on its co-authors until May. Either way, they, their press release said they weren't able to participate in the legislative process. How are you not able to participate in the legislative process for a bill that was written last August, that was introduced in February, that you sign on its co-authors for in its final form in May? We tired as shit.
Hey, everybody, my name is Tiffany Quarles, I'm with the Lineage Equity and Advancement Project, I'm a native of South LA, this is my community. I got involved with this five years ago because I love black Americans, I love my community. I've seen the suffering. Go outside, our people are on the streets, go to Skid Row. I don't care if you had a beef with Bradford. Black people in LA and California are suffering. And they couldn't even think about us to do this, the right thing. Like, how many times have we been told that reparations are impossible? How many times we've heard, it's never going to happen? Well, we got to the first yard line, and it wasn't white people, it wasn't Latinos, it wasn't Asians, it was our own people who did this to us. I don't want to hear any excuses about what Bradford did or didn't. You should have represented your constituents. The reality is, is black Californians, we don't have anyone representing us right now. Just because somebody's black, we have nobody in Sacramento, not in the Assembly, not in the Senate, representing our interests. And that showed clearly, even though we knew it all along, we had it now on 4K. And they can't even, you know, apologize to us and tell us that they would try better next year. I don't care if Governor Newsom threatened to veto the bill. Your job is to get the bills on the desk, and we will get Newsom when it's time. And now, the whole nation has been watching. I went to the UN in Geneva in April, and people in Africa, people in the Caribbean are watching us. We were giving people hope, black people need hope. And I just can't even believe that, you know, our own people sold us out. I feel like this is one of the biggest betrayals we have faced as a people. Yeah, and so the next question is, where do we go from here? Do we vote them out? That's right. We vote you out, because if you're not representing us, then what is the point? We have, I mean, when is the last time y'all seen legislation written for us? Never, and here we are in California, the first time we've seen this in our lifetime, and our own people sold us out. So, I'm here today, I'm angry, my heart is heavy, but I'm not discouraged, I'm going to keep fighting. Like I said, we got this far because of faith. Like, I was mobbed, told it would never happen, and we got it to the finish line, and we coming back, and we're going to get this done for our people.
All right, what Tiffany and Marcus said. I am Friday Jones, my name is Consta Jones Mohammed, I wear a lot of hats. I'm the President of the National Assembly of American Slavery Descendants. I'm the Vice Chair of the Los Angeles Reparations Advisory Commission. I am one of the founding members of the Coalition for Just and Equitable California. And what I will say, for me, and, and I, I've learned to not put my heart on my sleeve, so my heart is in good health and, and I'm ready to go. Chair Lori Wilson came out. You and Chair Wilson are the only two CLBC members who came out. And what she said was, we will work on this next year, this happens to bills all the time. She reduced two of the most historic bills in our nation since 1865 and the ending of the Civil War, and she made it the equivalent of, are we going to pave the 118, go into Bakersfield, or something random that does not have historical context and significance? She played it short, and for that, it's unforgivable. She's got to go. And she's in Northern Cali, but you represent us here. You are my Assembly member. Senator Lola Smallwood Quavis is my senator. And from the rumblings that we heard, it, it seems to me that the decision was made prior to Saturday. There was conversations being had about funding, going to a fund, I'm not going to name any names, but she is behind it. And the fact that it would be conceptually okay for black organizations to essentially eat for the next year when they have stopped this reparations movement on a national scale is an abomination. And like Tiffany said, it is not anyone else, it is our own people. And we deserve better representation than that. And so, I, you know, look, we've been doing a unity thing on a national tour, the reparations movement itself has different ideologies. However, the people that have been in this the longest are my parents' age, my mother's age, my father's age. They grew up in segregation, I give them grace because they came up in, I'm black and I'm proud, I understand their dedication to all black people. But like Tiffany said, we, the two opposing all-black people, the lineage reparationists, we're all in Switzerland. And the reality is, around the world, people are looking at us. It is not just the United States and municipalities like the city of Los Angeles trying to figure out now what I'm going to do as a Commissioner. It is people in foreign countries, in, where they don't dominate. In South American countries where they don't dominate, and they're flipping through the recommendations that came from that California task force, and now what are they supposed to do? You all have, again, reduced that bill as if we're trying to see how many bottle caps are we doing plastic bags this year? It's not, it's not that kind of bill, and y'all missed like a paramount moment in time where all of the universe lined up to make it happen, and there's no guarantee we're going to have it again. So, that's what I have to say on the issue. You can follow naasd.org and sign up for our newsletter, because we are unifying, and we're growing for the national movement. We have our organizations here that are doing the local work, and you got to tap in. And like Jan said, if y'all leaving, fill out them pages hanging on the back wall. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you. So, one of the biggest slaps in the face was that three days before this bill was killed, another bill was approved, giving loans of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to people who just now are coming to this country. And we're seeing all across the country that there are similar programs being put out to accommodate folks who are coming from other areas, where also our tax dollars are being used to create roads, they're forcing those people over here. So, we, the African Town Hall List, back in February, we were pleased when we heard the bills from the beginning. Because it didn't sound like reparations sounded like a new road for a program. You know, the right there, we are here, and we go work for Mass and all this other crazy crap, even apology. Some of y'all wrong with apology, some of it don't give a damn about an apology. Because that don't get us off the streets, that don't pay our mortgage, that don't help give us businesses. So we heard one of the individuals who stood from the beginning against any real type of monetary reparations, any type of law, was Reggie Jones Sawyer. And we heard he was trying to come to the 10th District during the primaries. So we did our best to make sure he can come over here to the 10th District. And he actually ended up coming in last place. So that's part of the power that we have when these individuals think they're going to be career politicians by doing this dirty. We actually have the power to bring that to the end. So that's one of the things we're looking at today, what exactly are we going to do about the 10 who are stepping up for us?
Can, can y'all remind me, what's the prompt? We just telling our story or what?
Telling our story.
All right, hey, everybody. My name is Jan Williams, I'm one of the organizers with Black Lives Matter in Los Angeles. I've been plugged in doing work with BLMLA for about ten years now. And I've been plugged in with these fine people, these brilliant folks organizing the work for reparations throughout the state. So, without these folks, I want y'all to understand, without these folks that are sitting here, and our other folks that are up north, our folks that showed up, most of these peoples, we would not have this fucking bill if these folks did not come together, put their differences aside, stay focused on the work, and advance reparations for us here in California. This is what we did as regular community activists, not as elected officials who are elected to represent our community. We did this because, we did this because our ancestors called us to do this work. Our ancestors called us to bring humanity and dignity to all the sacrifice. They have been sacrificed, they didn't choose to make that sacrifice. This fucking system sacrificed our ancestors. And we are here to say, no more, no more. You will honor us and you will cut us our motherfucking checks, not just for slavery, but for, it started with slavery, but it has not ended. It has not ended. You will stop the bleeding. Look outside, our people don't have a fucking house. That didn't happen by accident, that happened because systematically, when they couldn't say Negro no more, they put felonies on our heads. That's why that shit happened. Instead, you can't have a house, you go sleep in this jail, you can't have education, you can't have a job, you can't do shit because you a felon now. And in the meantime, what happened? In the meantime, while we were being tethered to the bottom, we see other people getting granted the opportunity to come and live this life of an American dream. It's been our fucking nightmare, our nightmare. So no, fuck you Congressional Legislative Black Caucus and your fucking feelings. We ain't got time for feelings. We got time to stop the bleeding. We got to stop the bleeding. And look, this weave cost me forty dollars. If they don't like it at work, I'll change it because they pay me good enough to change it. Pay me, I'll change it. You know what? They closing grocery stores in our neighborhoods any fucking way. The fuck I care, the fuck I care if you wrote me a letter forty days before it closed to say they're about to close your grocery store? That ain't reparations? That ain't going to get my people off the street? What they going to do? Turn it into a housing shelter because it's a hell of a lot of closed buildings that people, hey, hey, while we on this bullshit, who knows about the scandal that's happening with the state-owned building down the street? The EDD building? The EDD building belongs to us. But they have a Congressional, a California State Legislature that's turning it over to private industry? Y'all better pay attention, because we paying attention. And because we're paying attention, we got closer to reparations, ever in history, ever in history. Thank these people that are sitting up here, y'all stand up. Marcus Champion and his wife, they got kids, Marcus on Zoom twelve hours a day, not for his job, for us. Y'all don't even know this man. And while, even though y'all showed up to complain about what did not happen, y'all, y'all got to make sure you're not just showing up to complain. Show up to put in some work, because we can't keep doing this by ourselves. This is not just throughout the state of California, this shit is federal. We got to win it first here, because I care about my family in Louisiana. I care about my family in Georgia. I care about my family in New York and everywhere else where people are being disaffiliated. I care about my brothers in prison, dying of squalor. We had a brother that was killed by bedbugs in prison. How did he suffer? Dead by bedbugs. Dead by bedbugs. You hear me? Are you fucking enraged? Sister, where's my, where's the President of the Enraged Black Committee? I know she here because I saw you. The President, there she is, come here, Ms. Robbie. But that's the President of the Enraged Black People right there. Ms. Robbie, if you are not fucking enraged, something is wrong with your soul. Because we cannot, we cannot become desensitized to seeing the suffering of our people. The Auntie of Dejean Kazee, let me tell you about this motherfucking Congressional Black Caucus. Y'all shouldn't have gave me this fucking mic, y'all shouldn't have gave me this mic. Sister Jamie Kazee, stand up. Her nephew, Dejean Kazee, was murdered by police and, by, by LA County Sheriff's Department. And he was riding a bike in peace. Sheriffs came to disrupt his peace while he was riding his bike. August thirty-first, twenty twenty, twenty twenty, August thirty-third, first, twenty twenty. Let me tell you, Black Lives. Let me tell y'all. On a bicycle, I'm going to come up in here and stand with me, sister. Okay, I'm sorry, I'm going to just tell y'all about this Congressional Black Caucus. And, and Mike Gibson, the night her, I mean, her nephew was murdered by the sheriffs in LA County in his district, that same night, Mike Gibson did the same bullshit that they did last week to the, to that police decertification bill. The same fucking night that they let the police decertification bill die, Mike Gibson, his district, Dejean Kazee is murdered. We got a lot to fight for, y'all, it's not going to stop. Do not leave here without making sure you are plugged in, because guess what, I'm calling you. And I want to make sure you're angry. And not just angry, but that's ready to put that anger to work, because it's going to take us to do the work. Ain't nobody going to do this shit for us, y'all see, they have a practice of skipping over us. And using us as welcome mats while they come in and, and get, and, okay, I'm going to shut up. I don't know how I'm supposed to talk after that. Okay, you cannot hear me if you are talking, we are speaking important information to you, you must listen, please. Thank you. My name is Sharice. Okay, I'm not with any organization. I feel like I birthed SB 1403. Okay? I was the one who provided the legal framework for it, what it's supposed to look like. And Reggie Jones Sawyer is my representative, I voted for him. And for over two years, his office refused to meet with me. But I want to thank Tiffany for bringing me into the reparations movement, because I have been advocating for the re-establishment of the Freedmen's Bureau at the federal level for over four years, okay? That is where some of this information or bills came from about SB 1403. Again, I provided the legal framework, nobody from the California Legislative Black Caucus met with me, nobody would talk to me. And you may have seen me on TV or internet, I don't know, the other day, and you might wonder, why is she so angry? Because I have been working on this, and we have been working on this for so long. I sent a letter to the White House last year, I sent a letter to POTUS and FLOTUS, and I laid out, by the way, I'm a lawyer, passed the bar in three states, two at the same time, so I don't want you to think I'm just, you know, somebody that's some crazy person. Okay? I've been practicing for almost twenty years, right? Graduated UC Berkeley of this state and Howard University School of Law, okay? So I'm not, I'm not any just crazy person coming up here. God gave me that information, right? It was Him that birthed that in me, and you guys blew it. Y'all blew it, that's why you saw me be so passionate, and people have misinterpreted what I said. Oh, see, she said we should stop Kamala from becoming. Oh, see, she said we should stop Kamala from becoming president. That's not what I said. I, again, I'm a, I'm a strategist. I'm an organizer. I know how people think. And folks are gonna see Democrats, black Democrats, blocking reparations, and they gonna blame the rest of the Democratic Party, okay? People have asked me to speak about reparations and what the legal framework is. And people are pissed off about lineage. The reason we had to do it, because we had to convince Republicans that we would give reparations to someone. You gotta start somewhere. We have to be methodical about this. We have to do things decent in and order. And there's a difference between cash, reparations, and policy. And what we saw in that bill, uh, the, the, uh, Task Force Report, was mostly policy for all black people. So anybody who's here, I know there's some ops here. I know there's some ops here. Let me tell you, you messed it up not just for yourselves, you messed it up for the whole world. I have people calling me all the time. I provided public testimony. I don't get paid for this. God has given me the money and blessed me with the money to travel and to testify, and thank God for Zoom. But you didn't just mess this up for California. You messed this up for everyone, but guess what? We not, we down, it maybe look like we're down, but we're not out, because this is gonna push things at the federal level. I'm sending another letter to the White House again. I want the Freedmen's Bureau reestablished by executive order. President Bush, I'm sorry, President Bush, Lord have mercy, President Biden. President Biden, you can do it. I already sent you in Flotus the letter. You can do it by executive order, because the Freedmen's Bureau was under the Department of Defense, which is in the executive branch. You don't need to go through Congress or the Senate. As a matter of fact, you guys mightn't be able to call another session, no one's gonna can write it by executive order. We have an Office of Tribal Affairs under the Governor's Office. He don't need no votes. He can write it by executive order. So y'all might wanna call in emergency session this week, okay? When you go talk about that gas, go talk about these reparations, you got twelve million dollars set aside not to give to that nonprofit, because that's what they trying to do. That's what they trying to do. You got twelve million dollars. It is not going to Danny Booker in prison. It's not going to hair. It's not going to Mia Bonto, who thinks that she wants to give culturally relevant... What does this say? Food as medicine. Does this look like reparations to you? Does this look like reparations? They call this reparations. This is not reparations. These are no black people sitting here in this bill that they call reparations. Wait, I'm sorry, y'all, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. What happened on Saturday was we were betrayed. He leaving now, he leaving now, because I'm speaking that gospel, okay? Now, what happened on Saturday is we were betrayed. I asked, I asked, I asked Bill, Sharice asked Bill to bring the bills to the floor. I asked him. And guess what he said? I told him, I said, "I don't agree with everything you do." Because you a Republican. Yeah, I don't agree with you. Huh? Bill is Assembly Member Bill, is Bilal Assembly, okay? He don't agree with reparations. Every time I see Bilal come up, I'm like, he's an anti-black racist. But guess what? When I went up to him and I introduced myself, because we need bipartisan support, it does not matter where. We need to stop relying on black Democrats or the Democratic Party to bring us our liberation. We need bipartisan support. Remember that. When you are looking at bills, how come those other people got it? Because somebody with Republicans, so they ask a Republican to help them out. Bipartisan support, right? Okay, I'm not advocating for a specific party. I'm, I'm, I'm nonpartisan. But we need bipartisan support. I asked Bilal to bring the bill up. And he was so kind. After talking to him for thirty seconds, he brought the bill up, and he spent, what, four hours? About four hours trying to get those bills through, and they were blocked. And some people don't like to hear the truth. The Republican who is anti-reparations brought our most important reparations bills up, because we serve a just God. And God was with us that night. And everybody saw that the black Democrats in the state of California did not want black people to get reparations. We had to go through a white Republican who is against reparations. Shame on you. Shame on you. So some of us may have left their feeling defeated. We were there, Camila and I were there till after midnight. And I, I know how I feel, what I want to do next. We need to do things decent in and order. This is the last thing I'm gonna say. The narrative that is coming out now is that the supporters of reparations in the state of California have doxxed Assembly Member Lori Wilson, and that we are calling her B-word on, uh, social media. I don't even get down like that. I don't get down, and I don't know anybody else up here who gets down like that. I want that, excuse me, Mr. Bryant, I would like that narrative done, that we are doxxing anyone or we calling anyone names. That is not, that is, no, no, that is not how we roll. We do things decent in and order, and we may be passionate. We may be passionate. But we are, we do not commit any illegal acts. I'm so sorry. Nope, that's it.
All right, so... Okay, so we gonna give Bryant a couple minutes to respond. Isaac a couple minutes to respond. They were gonna get, they were gonna get to anybody's question. So go ahead, Isaac, give Isaac a couple minutes to respond.
First of all, no, advocacy is not violence just because it's black people. So I agree. I absolutely agree. The, the second y'all showed up to the gate while I was out there with you is the first time I've ever heard the pro-tem talk about violating of laws and arrests. And I went straight to the speaker. I said, "If the cops show up at that gate, I'm also going right back out there. We don't arrest protesters just because they're black." So you're right. Your organizing is righteous. I will defend that and protect that, even if it's coming at me. Keep pushing.
All right, so I've been seeing people put their hands up, all night.
Representative, Assembly Member Ryan, I wasn't here, so I'm not sure if anyone asked you this question. Why? Can you explain the video where you were caught on tape physically blocking the Republican? Hold on, I'm not done with the question. And then the video, he kept saying, "Bring it up, bring it up." And you said, "I supported Bradford's bills the entire legislative session." So my question is, what changed? If you voted for Bradford's bills the entire legislative session, what changed?
Well, the first thing is I wasn't gonna fracture us any further. The caucus was, is not in a place to continue to be split up any further, or we get nowhere. We get at, and I recognize that. I recognize that, and that's a very valid feeling. And I got no problems with anybody who's angry, even if you angry at me. I made the strategic decision with my colleagues that if we could not get a majority of the caucus, and I couldn't change those minds, I could not roll the rest of them who are gonna be up there for the next several years. And it was killing me that day. It was killing me, and that's what, hold on.
Everybody's about to get an opportunity to speak. Let Isaac finish, then we'll comment. I see y'all at the first two. I'm coming to y'all next. I'm gonna watch your hands. Isaac, grab that, then we're gonna get to people.
Yeah, but the last thing I will say about the process of it is I did not block Bill of City from doing anything. He provided you that video, and then he walked out and explained to you what happened on that video with an intentional framing on purpose. He had already been ruled by the House Chamber, I said this earlier, for trying to stall so the last one hundred bills couldn't get heard at all. He was banging on his desk not for reparations, not for reparations, because he does this on a regular basis. He does it on a regular basis. I was standing in front of him, because I had just tried to calm him down, because he had just gotten into a fight with another person. There's a much longer video. My back was to him, and he gasped, he gasped like me, because he knew I was struggling with the fact that I couldn't get my colleagues collectively and me to move in the direction that I thought made sense.
So I've been asking these two sisters right here if their hands are first. We're gonna go there. No, this sister was next. And we got here, then we gonna make our way around. So let's start with the, uh, lady right here to your right, Kevin.
Hold it down, please. Hold it down, please.
That's not picking up.
Good evening. My name is Connie Collins, and people have said a lot of things I wanted to say. I really think that...
Excuse me, people came here to hear the information. Just up in this meeting is not allowing that to happen. So again, if you need to talk, we need you to step outside. You can go talk, press, press, do that, right outside the door.
Okay, good evening. My name is Connie Collins. A lot of people have said what I wanted to say, but I'm gonna say this to, um, Isaac. With all due disrespect, you've done yourself a disservice. You've done the Democrats a disservice, because the way that you're... Because the way that you're addressing us is pure political foolery, sir. So having said that, in the spirit of Martin Luther King, how long must we wait? How long must we wait? Now, I'm gonna say something that may not be that popular. There's a lot of Pan-Africans here, but I'm gonna clear up a problem that we're having. When I say "we," I'm talking about the American descendants of chattel slavery. When I say "we," I'm talking about freedmen. I'm talking about the people that have experienced the harm here in the United States. To the Pan-Africanist, please hear me in this moment. It is not divisive for black Americans to self-identify and to stop being confused with every melanated person around the world. It is not divisive, it is not xenophobic to say that we are our own people, that we have our own culture, that we've been through atrocities and harms, that no one else in this country, whites, everybody here is an immigrant but us. Now, let's keep in mind, before I move on, why is it that we have CARICOM who fights for Caribbean? The African Union has joined with them, and yet no one calls them divisive or xenophobic. We have a right to have our debt paid for all of the atrocities that have taken place in slavery, peonage, convict leasing, um, redlining, Jim Crow, medical experience, land, medical experiments, land theft, lynchings, and so forth. But now I'm gonna rap, because I know it's hot and a lot of people wanna go, but I do wanna say this. I think, and I don't know where Isaac went, but to the Democrats, this was a purposeful sabotage. I think it was, uh, Marcus said, they had more than six months to bring an amendment to this bill. They scheduled this for a vote win, the last two vote, the last two days of the session. Why? So they could tell us, oh, we couldn't make it work. Why didn't Stephen Bradford second the motion? He sponsored, pardon me? Oh, Isaac, okay. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Okay, and about, he said, he wants me to wrap up in ten seconds, but I'm gonna say this. In Los Angeles, we've lost half of the black American population. Right now, sixty percent of the homeless are our people. Of that, almost seventy-five percent are our men. Every time I drive around Los Angeles, I'm seeing a new Latino business pop up. This is our time, and for Isaac, wherever you are, this is not political, uh, drama. This is our real lives. People are suffering. And for, for them to say, uh, bring it up in the next legislative session, and for some of you who know me and different organizers, I have a plan. So thank you.
All right, everybody, looks like most people really wanna say something, but again, we can't speak five minutes each, ten minutes each. If you can keep it to about two minutes or less.
Okay, thank you. My name is Carolyn Essex. I ran for state assembly. I tried to run for state assembly, and I needed more support. I will in twenty twenty-six, okay? We need our people inside of the assembly. And I just wanna say something from my heart. Isaac, I'm talking to you, Mr. Bryant. Sir, you need to hear this, from my heart. From my heart. We are not stupid people. We saw what happened. We saw that you didn't fight for us, and I know you. You fought for our time done, brothers and sisters. All of us, our none of brothers and sisters, brought bills to the floor, passed them all session long for them, black and brown people. And so it hurts. It hurts, man. And you need to sit down and be humble. You're not even being humble with us. You need to apologize for not banging on the desk like that white man did. We need a Dr. Umar up in here. We need that spirit to come out of you. You did not meet the moment. And how sad. We should be celebrating right now. We should be celebrating right now, but we're not. Once again, they're asking us to wait till next year. And I'm just the last thing I'm gonna say, we are not the Clippers. We not waiting till next year.
And the only thing I need to know is, because I'm about a specific person, because I get on the phone and I call them, and all I've heard is fraction. What does that mean? Who are we specifically talking about in the caucus? So that I can make a phone call and specifically talk to them to figure out what their issue is. I have not heard issue. I heard fraction. What's the issue? Why not? The point, the facts, that's what we need, so that we can make phone calls and speak to them directly. I have not heard one fact tonight that I can make a phone call on. So I'm not gonna take them no more time if somebody's willing to step to the side and talk to me, because I'm about changing business. I'm not about nothing else.
Wyatt, can you hear me? I'm Warren Swift, formerly known as Ray Martin Swift, strong community activist, leader, and columnist, author, at the age of seventy-four. I have fought in our community for years, when we had Darryl Day. And we had the, the longhand of the flashlight that beat us. But now I'm here on reparations. Diane, uh, uh, Emeritus, Diane Watson, would you please read what's on your shirt? With the mic, who give it, give it to Mike. All right, you know what I mean?
Damn right. I, uh, am attitude. My people worked four hundred years without a paycheck.
So what I wanna say to you all is about... M-O-N-E-Y. I'm the only one in the country that's talking about reparations and stimulus money. Reparations and stimulus money. Isaac Bryant, I need you to go back and spread the word, what you heard. Isaac Bryant, Isaac.
Twenty-five million.
Isaac.
Christ just went up.
Isaac Bryant. Yo, Isaac. Spread the word, what you heard. Stimulus money and reparations goes hand in hand. Why do we say that? Because everybody knows that we pay tax. We all pay tax. So when we hear white boys say, "I don't want to get my money," we pay tax for clothing, for food, for gasoline, for everything. We go nowhere. We have the Air Force, we have everything.
Ten seconds.
And now what we're talking about is how undocumented immigrants come to America and they think, "Hold that, hold that."
Time. Over, over by the door. Can y'all take that outside, please? Over by the door, where Isaac is at.
Over by the door, where Isaac is at. If you, if you want to talk to Isaac, please step outside and have that conversation. Isaac? Can y'all have that conversation outside the door for us? Alright, thank you. Excuse me, we got next speaker right here.
Well, don't talk to me like that. Don't talk to me like that.
So, as a result, what I'm saying to you all, is that reparations and stimulus money go to everyone's hands. And I need you to spread the word and ask questions. Anywhere the next person to speak, can you step outside? And there's so much more.
Big one on the grill. I, I wanna thank you, but I met you before. Uh, on a college reparations meeting. Also, when you guys moved over on Forty-third and Western, I think it was. So I, I wanna thank you about the reparations. And I wanna thank you.
And there's so much more. There's so much more.
My name is Steve. I'm sixty-nine years old. Born and raised in Watts, Los Angeles, California. I was officially Blackanized in nineteen sixty-five. What I mean by that is after the uprising in nineteen sixty-five, I learned that my nappy hair wasn't bad. My liver lips wasn't bad. That my big nose wasn't bad. At that time, the Black Panther Party moved in on Hundred and Third. We used to pass by as young men. They used to say, "Come here, little brother, let me talk to you." And I learned a lot. I learned from the Nation of Islam back then called the Black Muslims, that moved on the Hundred and Seventh and Juniper, that set up a mosque right there. And they would say, "Hey, brother, come here, let me talk to you." I learned from the Sons of Watts. That it wasn't about always complaining. I learned that the major thing was solutions. And as I got involved with some organizations like the Congress of Racial Equality, core organization, as I got involved with Brotherhood Crusade, as I campaigned for Latasha Harley at the Compton Courthouse, I put- I circulated petitions with Stevie Wonder in getting Martin Luther King, uh, a birthday and a national holiday. My point is this. I see more people right now than when I used to go out there in front of us folks. This, this place should be packed to the streets, but this is all the time. It's a mindset thing. It's a mindset thing. To use the biblical, uh, just a little bit, stop talking "problem, problem, problem." Fix your mind to "solution, solution, solution." It'll work.
Thank you. Solutions, thank you for saying that. My name is Dr. Truth Bay, formerly Mellow Desire. I am born here, for those who may say, "Oh, you're Haitian." No, I'm actually born here, descendant of slaves. So we're talking about solutions, you gotta be politically knowledgeable. That is not an option. Or else they're gonna continue to do a drive-by on us on every little thing. These all saw what happened. It doesn't make sense to have an excuse to say, "Oh, well." Legislators are there to pass bills. They are not there to socialize. Even if Gavin Newsom wants to veto, their job, they can override that. Alright? So this is the California Legislative Black Caucus members. Lori B. Wilson is up for election, and Akilah Weber. And it breaks my heart, 'cause Akilah Weber is the daughter of the queen of reparations, Dr. Shirley Weber. So I'm very disappointed to see not one of them pass this bill on the floor. Stephen Bradford, as we said before, he's running for Lieutenant Governor in 2026. I think he needs to run for Governor in 2025. That's real talk. I really do think we need somebody different. Dr. Corey Jackson, Kevin McCartney. Tina McKenna is up for election. Kevin McCartney, he said that he's black, but hey, we don't question that. Mia Banta, Christopher Holden. Yeah, he's termed out. And Reggie Byron, um, Reginald John Sawyer is actually termed out as well. The point is, family, when you go home, fill your brains with political knowledge. Our children deserve it. Our children deserve it. You don't have to like the messenger, but the message is the same. Please study politics and study the law. You are the president. Write down your election on there. Write it in, write it in ballot. Five seconds. Write in your name for legislation. We don't have to continue on with the same democratic plantation, let's leave it. Black Power.
Alright, family, again, when people up here talk, they're, "Please take the conversations outside, you disrupted from everybody else being able to hear." Also, if you have not signed in, please make sure you sign in, that way we can have your information and keep you updated as other meetings and other actions come up.
I'm James Thomas, and what I wanna say is, is that what you need to know is that there was a Citibank study, this sister knows about it, we talked about it. There was a Citibank study that was done that said that, um, the United States has lost sixteen trillion dollars because it discriminates against black people. Now, the reason that that is important, over the last twenty years, from the year 2000 to the year 2020, sixteen thou-, sixteen trillion dollars has not gone to the GDP. But we need to demand, when they say that they don't have the money, they have the money. All they have to do is stop discriminating against us in housing, business loans, higher education, and income inequity. That's all, those four areas. And so at the end of the day, if you wanna know what sixteen trillion dollars, I did demand, in terms of what they owe us. They owe us three hundred and sixty trillion dollars for over four hundred years of enslavement and subjugation. That's what they owe us! And I don't know about you, but I don't have a bill collector that will say, "I don't have to pay 'cause I can't afford it." And so what I will say is this, the last thing that I wanna say is this. There's an article, I got it on my, I, I had the professor text it to me, 'cause I wanna get it to you. What he talks about in the article is that black elected officials are dismissive of black demand. Dismissive of black demand. They come here and tell us about what everybody else outside of our community is doing. You remember when the mayor did that? She came in and was talking about Studio City and what Studio City wants, and what Sherman Oakes wanted. They did not vote for her, she didn't win their election in the ballot. But everybody here voted for her. And so at the end of the day, in my opinion, they all need to go. Every last one of them. Every last one of them. Because you, and, 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 and I wanna end with this. 10 seconds, I wanna end with this. My grandfather was lynched. I got a little emotional. Because I never knew my grandfather. I'm not talking about my great-great-great-great-grandfather, I'm talking about my grandfather. I never knew him, because he was lynched. Because in Mississippi, they said, "Ain't no nigga gonna drive a new car before we did." And so I just wanna say, thank you, I just wanna say, keep up the fight. Accept that we have white supremacists in blackface, and deal with them accordingly.
Alright, so we, we still have some questions that need answers. Just to give a quick summary, again, Senator Stephen Bradford's two bills were killed by the California Legislative Black Caucus. One of them would have created a reparations fund, and the other would have killed, I mean, would have created an agency. Bradford had gone to the press and said, "The Certain Budget Committee allocated twelve million dollars for Bradford's bills." So that begs the question, if Bradford's bills are now killed, where is that twelve million dollars going to go? Now, organizers have met with the Black Caucus members, have done some investigations to inquire where that twelve million dollars may go. Went to Senator Lola Smallwood Cuevas, and there are rumors that she plans to put a budget request in for six million dollars to go to her friends at the California Black Freedom Fund, which is the conglomerate of black nonprofit foundations and organizations that do so-called race equity work. Now we have someone here that is a representative of one of the organizations, or is a member of one of the organizations within the California Black Freedom Fund, that's Christian Flag of the California Black Power Network. He's sitting back there with the dress. Now, you said that I can ask you a question. Do you wanna know what you know? Do you want to know? Can you verify whether the California Black Power, or the California Black Caucus, and the California Black Freedom Fund have plans to use that twelve million dollars to distribute amongst organizations within the Black Freedom Fund, including yours, the California Black Power Network?
Greetings, family, how y'all doing? Uh, first of all, first of all, I'm gonna introduce myself. I'm gonna introduce myself, first of all. My name is Christian Flag. Born and raised right here in South Central LA. Uh, alumni at Crenshaw High School, class of 'oh-seven. Played on the football team, was the, the first class in many years to win a city championship at that football, uh, at Crenshaw. Similarly, similarly, I've been coming to Limerick Park. I've been here in Limerick Park since I was a baby. For generations, since Fifth Street Dix was over here. Since the World Stage was over here. So I'm, my, my blood and tears is right here, number one. Okay? Number two, I, I am the Director of Training at Community Coalition. Community Coalition is an organization that's been pushing and fighting for black and brown people in South Central LA for over thirty years. And I've been leading our education work that has brought the Black Student Achievement Plan to LAUSD. I work very closely with Jan Williams, with Joseph Williams, with folks at ACLU SoCal. We fought tooth and nail and have won a hundred and twenty-five million dollars for black students to get the resources they deserve. And as a matter of fact, LAUSD is trying to undercut that. They're trying to take race out of black student achievement. And you know what I've been spending my hours doing? Fighting with these folks, making sure they put race back in there. So, that's who I am, number one. Number two, let's get to it. So, COCO, Community Coalition, is a part of the California Black Power Network. Whatever fund you talking about, I don't know. So you need to clarify and get to it. So that's, I don't know what you're talking about, but I am a part of the California Black Power Network. That is a collection of thirty-nine black-led and black-serving organizations all across California that fight for black people all across California, doing the similar work that we do. Black Women for Wellness in LA is a part of the California Black Power Network. Right? It's folks in, it's the, the LA Black Worker Center is a part of the California Black Power Network who fight tooth and nail for stuff for black people. So, the funding that you're talking about, sister, I'm, I don't know. I'm not a part of that. I know the work that we do. The work that we do, we distinguish, we are very clear. The work that we do, the Black Student Achievement Plan, is not reparations. But we fight for reparations. I made public comment for reparations when they was here, uh, signing. So I wanna be clear, who I am, the work that I do. If you interested in pushing more for the black student education, I got you, brother, I got you. If you wanna connect around the work that we doing in LAUSD to make sure our babies is getting the resources they need, we getting teachers in there, we sending them to HBCU tours, we can do that. Aside from that, I'm here to be in community because I know we need to fight for reparations, and I needed to come see it for myself and hear what's been going on. So I'm here in it just like y'all. Appreciate you, other than that, I don't know what to say.
Call out the California Black Power Network. Um, they have been obstructing this process from the beginning. I'm sorry, Dr. Cheryl Graves, who was on the panel, voted against the lineage standard. And that was sabotage, because we can't do anything based on race. We told y'all that, and y'all still keep trying to make this a race-based policy, which is in essence, setting us up to fail. And y'all need to be called out for that, because we can't, COP209, the Fourteenth Amendment, they know that, but they still keep trying to make it based on being black. We've always said it should be based on being a descendant of US chattel slavery. That is illegal advice we have gotten from Dean Earn and Trimmer Ritzky. That is illegal advice we've gotten from many other esteemed scholars. And when they found that out, they still keep trying to sabotage this, and it's disgusting. Ninety percent of black people in California would qualify, but y'all keep still trying to make this about all black people. And while it might seem like it's a good intention, it's really just trying to stop us from getting reparations. It's about grant money for some of them. And so I just need to put that out there publicly. We need y'all to stop fighting against us, work with us. 'Cause we love black folks all over the world. We're not against anybody, but we need to make sure that this is done right, so the descendants can get what they are owed. So I'm putting this out there, the California Black Power Network, just work with CJ, stop, stop fighting against them, stop obstructing the work. Thank you.
Greetings, family, my name is TJ Lofton. Is it okay if, I wanna give y'all a little bit about my background. I come from the lowrider community, right here. How many y'all seen lowriders before? How many y'all know that lowriders, custom cars, and classic cars is the most powerful community in the African-American community, period, across the planet? These are the most lucrative people in our community, period. So let me tell y'all, years ago, thirty-five years ago, the Bloods and Crips decided, "Enough is enough." "We're gonna start building these cars and putting them in rap videos, etc." When the government found out that thousands of black men in Compton, LA, and Watts decided, "No more gang banking, we're gonna come together." Do y'all know what they did? They decided to ban cruising. Meaning, "We're gonna stop that." Y'all coming together because of these cars, we're gonna stop that. So fast-forwarding the story, I got into some trouble. They decided, "We gonna go after those car guys, 'cause we see what they're doing." And I decided that I'm no longer gonna support politicians after I told my politician that I got a case because I'm a black business owner. And my politician told most powerful black lowrider on the planet that "This is not a good time, this is an election season." I decided right then and there, I don't need no politician's help. I'm not gonna, I'm not a voter. This is purely for educational purposes. Don't take no offense to what I say. But I wanna tell you what we've done. We turned around as the lowrider community went around and called back, went back to Compton and decided, "We gonna start doing these schools over." So, I was a part of the organization that brought in Centennial High School. We got ten million dollars to put the trades back into the schools, y'all. How many y'all know that? Centennial and Dominion High School has the full, fully-blown automotive shops, state-of-the-art. Check this out, but how many African-Americans is in that class, y'all? The biggest industry on the planet is car building. We shipping cars from Germany, Australia, New Zealand, to buy every race's end on it, except for the African-Americans higher educated. That, that organization continued to go forward and turned around. They asked me to go be a part of, uh, what was going on at Compton High School. I gave a lecture, I'm sorry, at Compton College. When I left that college, they turned around and added classes. They added sandblasting classes, powder coating classes, etc. So that we can participate in this multi-billion-dollar industry that's funded by your local brothers and sisters that you see every day. Fast-forwarding the story, y'all. I am a part of education around the world. I partner with the Black College Expo because of what I do. And a lot of the things that's going on right now in the world, we're not talking about it. Reparations is something big. That's huge, but we cannot continue to look for the same thing and get a difference. Anyway, look me up at gentrification.com, family. I got a lot to talk about. Uh, uh, before you leave, we have papers, uh, taped up on the wall back here. These are different committees that you can work with. So again, we didn't come here tonight just to be mad, get stuff off our, uh, chest. We're trying to do right, so please leave these papers back here, identify a committee that you can join. But also, before we leave, we're gonna have calls to action from each organization. We'll start with Lee.
So, like you said, we don't wanna just leave here angry. We wanted y'all to get involved, and so if you go to, uh, sign up for our mailing list, we're gonna have some calls to action coming out soon. Once again, that's www- Once again, that's www.cjec-official.org. Sign up for our newsletter, we sent, we're sending out calls to action regarding the California Legislative Black Caucus to make sure they reintroduce the, the bills, and that we get other reparations legislation. Rafael, she's gonna pass out some cards on CJ.
This Sunday, Black Lives Matter LA will be in the park right here at five o'clock. And then at seven o'clock, they will be right back here in this building for their monthly meet.
All right, y'all. Some of y'all know me as Mama True. I've, I've been working in the black community ever since nineteen sixty-two, when I was a baby, damn near. So I'm looking across this crowd tonight, and I gotta tell y'all, I just got this to say. Y'all are turning the line. Y'all are holding the line. And as a former Black Panther, I wanna thank you for being here and standing up for your community. Continue to continue to do what it is that you do. I just wanna read a brief quote to remind you of who you are. Do y'all hear me? I wanna remind you of who you are. The significance of African-American prison population is political. What is noticeable about the African-American population generally, what we know generally about our people is that we are the highest sophisticated, politically-charged group of people that has held our nation down in resilience and resistance in the twentieth century. That means of all the folks that are out here stealing the money that we know belongs to us, we are the most sophisticated politically. So I just gotta say, y'all just keep right on doing what you're doing. Because you are, it doesn't, it feels like we're defeated. I can tell you, there were days when Martin felt defeated, when Malcolm felt defeated, when Fannie felt defeated. But they stayed their asses on the battlefield, and that's what I'm telling y'all to do. Stay on the battlefield.